Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. We have a meeting announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. Will the clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. We will have our Pledge of Allegiance said today by Chief Scott Schubert and Director Lee Schmidt of Public Safety and additional officers. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please, please sit down. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda in a second?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Agenda is amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be presented by all members of council to somebody who's been very special to the city of Pittsburgh for the past three decades. Chief Schubert, please come forward. And all members, join them, please. Everyone with them, come forward. Chief, we'll say a lot about you after I read the proclamation, but this proclamation says only a little bit of what I know about you, and so I want to read this first and then we'll continue to say, "Sing your praises," which I know you love. He does, he's a very humble person, does not like it if you knew him at all. Whereas Chief Scott Schubert is retiring on July 1st, 2022, after 29 years with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. Over his nearly three decades in public service, he rose through the ranks from patrolman to detective, sergeant, lieutenant, commander, assistant chief, and acting chief before being promoted to chief of police for the city of Pittsburgh in February 2017. And whereas during his career as chief, as chief, Schubert led the initiative of building trust and legitimacy in the community by establishing a Pittsburgh Police Community Engagement Office. Community Resource and Neighborhood Resource Officers participated in a number of activities in schools, churches, and neighborhoods that helped create positive relationships between officers and the communities they serve. And if you know what they've done, you have, it was difficult to find an event in the city of Pittsburgh that his officers were not there. And whereas, based on a national initiative, he created the Group Violence Intervention Partnership between law enforcement, social services, and the faith community, whose job it was to mediate and interrupt violence, to keep it from spreading. And whereas, Scott Schubert created the partnership with several organizations, including 412 Boxing, One Cop, and the Pittsburgh Steelers, Pirates, Penguins, and Penguins, in order to build relationships with inner-city children and youth. And whereas, he has had many accomplishments during his, his time as chief of police, including, but not limited to, creating the real-time crime center, the use of body-worn cameras, started under this chief, for all officers, and the establishment of the Office of Strategy, Accountability, and Resiliency. And whereas, he collaborated with the U.S. Attorney's Office to establish a high-intensity drug trafficking area unit within the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, which allowed the Bureau to disrupt drug trafficking with gun violence at the highest levels. And whereas, Chief Schubert is also well-known for his promotion and participation in the annual Pittsburgh Pull or Plunge, which benefits the Special Olympics. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and thank Chief Scott Schubert for his tireless and dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 to be Chief Scott Schubert Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you, Chief. Stand and ovation, that doesn't happen to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this proclamation. I appreciate it. It's not needed. I love being a city of Pittsburgh resident, love being a Pittsburgh police officer. It runs in my family, it runs in my DNA. I appreciate all of the support from council over the years in various roles within the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. Thank you for giving us the, the equipment and funding we need to do our job to help the citizens of Pittsburgh, to keep them safe and to build relationships with the community. It's been not always, we may not always agree on things, but we're able to sit down and talk and come up with something in the middle. And I think that's really important for our country, is we have to sit down and talk and get to see each other's side and engage and learn from one another and help to make things better for, you know, our residents. That's what it's all about. Been very blessed within the Pittsburgh Police to be in a lot of different assignments and learn, learn a lot of different things throughout my career, meet a lot of good people. And community engagement is something that's, that's huge for me. It's something I, I believe in, and I love to be a part of. The Pittsburgh Police, the officers do an amazing job out in the community, helping one another, helping the residents. And, I mean, I don't think that can ever be, you know, overshadowed with the work they do day in and day out with the residents. When we're wrong, we need to be held accountable for being wrong. But the vast majority of the officers with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police do their job with professionalism and for their love of the city, and their love of the profession of being a cop. To be out there to help people, to help try to make a difference in the lives of others and to try to keep people safe. We have so many stories over, at least the last 30 years that I've been in the Pittsburgh Police, of the, the dangerous situations our officers have put themselves in to help others, and we have those that have died in the line of duty trying to help others. So I thank you for, for this. You know, I may be retiring, but Pittsburgh's still my home. I'll still be involved with things. I may be working in West Virginia, but I'll still be living here and living there and committed to doing whatever I can to help our city, our residents. I wish everybody well. And I wish, you know, everybody does good for the city of Pittsburgh because we have a beautiful city, a great city. And if I could ask just one thing, please take care of our officers out there. They, they are the ones who are out there trying to put their lives on the line to help others. They need your support. They need the funding. And I said, when we're wrong, tell us we're wrong. We've never not owned up to things that we've done that weren't right. We learn from it and we, we improve and we, and we, we try to move forward in a better way. We're always trying to change how we do things to be better, to be more efficient, to be safer. So our, our officers do an amazing job, and I couldn't be prouder of them and what they do and what they stand for. So thank you very much. And you're going to be in very capable hands with the deputy chief. I've known Tom Stankreki my whole career, and I've had the honor of working with him for the last five and a half years on a daily basis. He never gets any sleep because he's always working. He knows his department inside and out. And you'll be in very good, capable hands with him. He's one of the fairest people that I know. He's one of the hardest-working people I know. So you'll be in very capable hands. But thank you very much for this. You didn't have to do it, but I appreciate it.
Do you have any last, like, say a few words?
Chief. Thank you. I'd like to thank Chief Schubert for his service. As you heard from him, he is very passionate about his time with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and serving the residents of the, the city. I, I aspire to be more like him. I was excited when he got promoted to be the chief and lead us for the last five and a half, six years or so. And I really owe a lot to him for selecting me to be the deputy chief and putting a, a good team in place. So we hope to carry on the example and the tradition that Chief Schubert set for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll begin with council members. Councilman Coghill?
Thank, thank you, Madam President. Scott, you know, we, we grew up together. We grew up in the same neighborhood. Our brothers knew each other. You know, we, we kind of lived the same life growing up. We used to play pickup football. And let me tell you, he's, he's a load to bring down on that football field. As much passion as he brings to this police force, he did the same thing when we were 12, 14 years old, playing pickup football. And that's carried on to, to your profession. You know, I can't say enough about what you meant to this city. You know Beachview is proud of you. He's, he's a Beachview guy. He lives in Brookline now, but you know, he's, he's always going to be a Beachview guy at heart. And all of our friends, you know, they have nothing but wonderful things to say about you. I can't say enough as to getting us through those protests with the murder of George Floyd. I thought our police department did an excellent job. Not without a mishap here or there, but you know, all in all, when we have over 100 protests and the incidences that we had, and if you would ask me to sign on the dotted line before the protests, I would have instantly. So congratulations on what a great job you did there, shepherding us through a very difficult time. Your work with the Special Olympics, you know, it's second to none. You know, I'm sure you'll continue that, and whether it be in your new position or here at home. You know, I know those families, how grateful they are to you, and you're very well-known for that. And, you know, I'm very thankful that you participated in the Special Olympics as you did. And I'll tell you, not too many police chiefs can toe the line between the administration and the rank and file. I have yet to see one until Chief Schubert came along, who absolutely had the respect from the rank and file and the administration. It's a very difficult thing to do. You know, they're put in tough situations. They have to make tough decisions all the time. Somehow you managed to get through it, and I will tell you, there's not a person on this police force, an officer, who doesn't respect you and have good things to say about you. I wish you all the best. You know, our loss is their gain, and I'm terribly, I was terribly upset to hear about your retirement. I feel this city needs you at this critical time. I was happy to have you for the past really difficult couple of years. I thank you so much for your service. Mr. Stankreki, I have nothing but confidence in you as well. Also a Brookline guy, you know, I know that you'll fill Scott's jo, Scott's shoes, you know, not easy job for you to do, but you know, I know enough about you where I have nothing but confidence in you. And I want to thank all the police officers, you know, and you can count on me, Chief, to make sure that our police officers are the best paid, I hope someday. I worry about attrition. I worry about retirement. There's a lot of things on the radar screen that, you know, that I'm concerned about. I wish we had you here to, to, to get us through it. But I just wanted to say thank you so much on behalf of me, on behalf of the community that we come from. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill. Councilman Lovell?
Thank you, Chief Schubert. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the years. I think the middle portion of your comments are what I sort of reflect on the most, which is your accessibility and all, your willingness to always have any hard conversation that was, that needed to take place, and your willingness to always find sort of the common ground in terms of what it meant to protect our safe, to protect the citizens of this city as well as protect those that you were, that you command. And so I just want to thank you for your service to the city, for your willingness to always be there, and for your accessibility over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman?
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo that. I think you said it best, the common ground. You know, we as legislators try to find the right balance, but you were always somebody to offer us a compromise on a lot of legislation, which helped you, helped us, helped the whole city. And I think we're going to really miss that because there's not many people that like to meet in the middle and work things out. I think two things that really stand out. One, just you walking the neighborhood beat. I mean, you don't see that anymore. And our residents always ask for that. And here's the chief walking every neighborhood in the city, shaking hands, talking to people. I remember I was at home, I came outside, you were walking the streets. I think that's something that is lost, but I think that shows the passion that you had for the city, for the residents, and for the job that you were, that you had to do, the very, very, very difficult job that you had to do. And I think you showed class all the way through. I will also like to thank you for every, it was around January where you gave me the flu, for jumping into the ice-cold ponds. But hopefully I don't have to do that anymore now that you're not the chief, but we'll see. But that's something that brings out a lot of people.
Recording stopped.
Uh-oh. They're cutting me off already.
Recording in progress.
Wow. I apologize.
But no, you're good. But no, I think, you know, the plunge and what you do for Special Olympics is really special. And I think it's great, and it shows that you care about everybody. And it's such a great event. I mean, it's grown from, I remember the first one we did was in Station Square. Now you have all of Heinz Field, basically. So it's a credit to you, and we're definitely going to miss you here. And don't be surprised if some of us call for some advice down the road, but thank you again for everything you've done for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Chief, thank you for your decades of service. It's quite astounding compared to the two and a half years that I've been here. So our time was a bit short-lived together, but during that time, you've been nothing but approachable and responsive to the needs of the North Side. In fact, you know, we were, you know, there was multiple challenges in working closely with you in Zone 1. You know, I always brought it to a community meeting, and you always rearranged your schedule, just made it happen so that you could be there for the residents. So, and that happened on multiple, multiple occasions. So I really appreciate your dedication to that sort of community, you know, meeting, input situations. You know, also just, it's really just nice to know that you can immediately get a response from the chief when something's going on. You've always picked up the phone, always called back. And I really appreciate your, you know, your approach to community policing. I mean, your initiative of walking on the neighborhoods. I remember during the pandemic, when my staff was at home, they were surprised when I looked out the window and you were literally walking past, you know, their computer while they're working. And, you know, they knew that you were out talking to residents about what's happened in their neighborhood. So just want to say thank you for your service to the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online? No members online? Okay. So Chief, I'm just going to say, as, first, I have a lot to say, but I want to say you can sit down because I don't want the, the last day that you're here in council to be that we made you stand here and listen to each one of us talk for so long. So I apologize to all of your standing. But, well, thank you all. And I just do want to acknowledge that we're here with, also joined by the Public Safety Director. Again, I want to say that, Lee Schmidt, Sergeant Tagmire, Commander Ripple. And if you know Commander Ripple, he's the one who oversees police SWAT, bomb squad, motorcycle officers, the horses, all those things that are at the events all the time. And of course, we have Assistant Chief Stankreki, who I have to say has the utmost respect by, by many of us here. And, but you're going to have big shoes to fill, and I know you know that. Chief Schubert started in our zone as a commander, and I knew then he was going to go somewhere far. And I was so worried because we were going to lose an amazing commander in Zone 6. But what he did back then, before it was fashionable, before people talked about community and policing, he was there. He was in the community. He was building relationships, and he was making people understand that there's a different way of policing, and there's a better way to treat people. And so he made sure he set by, set the example. And I want to thank him for all that he's done for all the years. And yes, you have amazing officers and that are highly trained in the city of Pittsburgh. And, and I do, I mean, as we've mentioned before, you get, there are people that there are, sometimes there are going to be issues, and you have addressed those for the most part. So I want to thank you for that. But I really want to thank you for what you've done for the city of Pittsburgh. And City Council is going to make a donation in your name to Special Olympics, because we know that that's so important to you. But there's so many, it was hard to narrow it down to what one cause because you were involved in so many things. But because you, Special Olympics is something that I know that you really raised the level of awareness here in the city of Pittsburgh about Special Olympics. We're going to make that donation there. You're welcome. And I just want to thank you and, and I wish you and your family, I think your family, they've given up a lot of time with you. People don't realize how we do call you on holidays, at night, on weekends, and you're always, you always answer the phone, you always take the call. And your family is also, you know, the one, all of your families are the ones that pay the price for that sometimes. So I want to thank you and your family for all that you've done for the city of Pittsburgh. And I said, I, I'm glad that he's staying in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm going to run his campaign when he decides to run for office. I tell him all the time, he knows so many people, he could run for anything.
Not council, right?
Yeah. Council, Councilman Coghill, he lives in your district.
We don't make it.
No, I'm kidding. But anyway, I just really want to thank you for all that you've done. And Reverend Burgess, Scott's just going to, but I want to thank you for all that you've done in, in unique ways of policing, but thank you very much. And I hope you're happy, and I hope, pray for your safety and for all your officers. Reverend Burgess, did you want to say something?
Yes.
And he's ill, and he's gone on, so I just.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Reverend.
I have a little bit of this cold, and I figured I didn't want anybody to catch it. I got it from my daughter. Chief, it has been a pleasure working with you. You and I, I think, have never argued, and we've worked together. You've compromised. You've been just a wonderful friend and colleague. I've learned a lot about policing from you. And although you are going to do something different, I still think your hands will be on the city in various informal ways. And this council, and this council person is always in your debt.
Thank you. And is that it? Any other members? With that said, I just want to again, thank you on behalf of Pittsburgh City Council, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh. Deputy Chief, we're ready to work with you however we can to support your efforts, too. So, and Chief Schubert has the utmost confidence in you, so that gives us a lot of confidence in you, too. So I just want to make sure that you know.
I'll be calling him.
Yeah. We're, we're happy to be here for all you. So everyone will come up and take a photo, please.
Can we take our masks off?
Yeah, please. Take your mask off, hold the proclamation. You have to hold it open.
How do we manage to ever have a hard time with that?
I believe.
And we'll have a reception afterwards if you want to come back.
Yes, I'm glad.
Yeah.
Where you work.
Here, Chief, here's your call.
We'll do one with council, everyone here. We'll do one with council, everyone here, then we'll have, you can come up, too.
Please.
Good job, man.
Good job.
O'Connor, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Kraus, and Councilwoman Strasburger, Smith and Gross. Council members. Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 487. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the life of Jim Furlough as being one of commitment, passion, and dedication. He was a great leader and a visionary, a fiery orator, and fierce advocate for the underdog, a servant of the people, an organizer, trailblazer, changemaker, and friend. The Council of the City of Pittsburgh mourns his untimely death and extends condolences to his family. Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 487. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 18th, 2022 to be reformed Presbyterian Women's Association 125th Anniversary Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 488. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022 to be Conny Wellens Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presents, whereas Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 is the first comprehensive law prohibiting discrimination based on sex in all programs or activities of educational institutions that receive federal financial assistance. And whereas Congresswoman Patsy Mink of Hawaii, Congresswoman Edith Green of Oregon, Senator Birch Bay of Indiana, and their teams took pivotal leadership roles in drafting and introducing a bill that contained provisions for gender equity in education. And whereas Title IX is modeled after Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the landmark law that prohibits discrimination based on race, color, and national origin in federally funded programs. And whereas, soon after the Civil Rights Act was passed, Congress recognized that sex discrimination in education programs are necessitated federal legislation to protect all students, boys, and girls, faculty, and staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate June 23rd, 2022 to be the 50th anniversary of Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. We see this involvement to be a commitment to increase the opportunities for all citizens and are excited for continuous growth.
Can I have, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the proclamations in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. And our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. And we, we have the first registered speaker, and please, when you come to the podium, please state your name, your neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And the first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bels Hoover. Tim Buck Two, Mali, also there. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. June, Week 3 is African Intelligence Week. Ms. McDonald in New York. Audra is our focus. She is a musical and theatrical genius in RVU. A concern of mine and the GIS is protection of free speech via vote by voter verification and public comment according to the law. A concern of council also is the exercise of freedom of speech in public comment according to the law. The ultimate U.S. law on freedom of speech is the U.S. Constitution, Amendment 1. No law shall be passed abridging freedom of speech. The primary Pittsburgh government law on the exercise of free speech is the Rules of Council, RUC. The primary Pennsylvania law on lawyer actions is the Pennsylvania Code, Chapter 83, Disciplinary Enforcement to Disbarment Rule 204. Grounds: breaking laws, inducing citizens to break laws, seducing citizens to break laws that do not exist. The Pittsburgh Rules of Council is the body of rules regulating council actions, the law of or on this council. The Pittsburgh Rules of Council on Freedom of Speech and Public Comment does not contain one reference to not permit profanity. Yet President Kelsmith and Burgess and Lovell, and now Mr. Daniel Friedson representing them, at our expense, DL- expense, DF, connects that to the Rules of Council. Second, there is no reference to decorum used by DF, 14 June 2022, to restrict citizen speech if indecorous, whatever that's supposed to mean, in direct contradiction to the Office of Solicitor of the City, OS Letter to RLM, 15 December 2015. Third, no reference to gavel use to stop wrong speech in public comment, approved by DF, 14 June 2022, and no reference to babies not being permitted also by him. In all of these, Kail Smith at all are not obeying existing rules of council. In this, you councilors and your counselor are lawless and foundation for citizens to seek the entire council to be impeached by trial in the Court of Common Pleas, and for DF to be disbarred via the disciplinary board of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court.
Can we have our next registered speaker, Bernadette Mozy? Good morning, Bernadette.
I have prepared a whole bunch of speeches, but I'm not going to. My name is Bernadette Mozy. I'm from Beachview. I'm the lady, and I'm proud to say that after complaining, I got the sidewalks fixed at the senior center. And then weeks later, when a seen-eye dog and his owner came to me and asked me for help, I prevented the hillslide from taking down the Fallowfield Bridge, possibly. We had a crap show at the senior center on the 26th wherein Anthony, Senator Fontana, nobody showed, nobody was invited. Do not let this Broadway tree planting, tree hugging, whatever you want to call it, don't let it go through. The first several steps of the zebra crossing lines, is what kids call them, is a failure. I like that they took out that lane, but nobody planned who's taking care of it. And I, in my chair, and by the way, I'm in that chair because of ill-planned wheelchair ramps, the yellow slip and slide, what your first responders called it, as they covered me with their coats in the rain. It's dead man's crossing at the top of Coast. It's dead man's curve at the top of Bowstead. It is an embarrassment at Tim's Corner and our monument, the crossing up there. I invite each and every one of you, and I've invited people before and they don't show, walk with me starting at Coast and watch how I have to zigzag back and forth. City can get out of debt. People don't know you're supposed to stop for people crossing. We need the push-button crossing-powered things all along Broadway. That's a big thing. I, in my chair, have gone up with a broom, and I've cleaned all the debris that's in those painted bumpered-off Trolley Island areas. It's an embarrassment. Last year leaving Anthony's headquarters, I crossed Broadway bump, 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 bump. My chair went to a screeching halt. Pete Wagner came and helped me, the fireman came and helped me. The bumps pulled the cable, pushed the cable off the battery. About a month ago, Officer Fina came to my rescue after doing the same bump, 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 bump. I came to a screeching halt underneath the Wenzel Trolley Bridge. Thank God I did not go across the street and it happened on the sidewalk. I would have been killed. We don't need planted areas that do not get taken care of. We don't need any further mess from Domi. They are ill-planned. They are not what the people want. Stop it.
Thank you.
I need help.
Thank you for your comments. Your time's expired. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Craig Prince. Craig Prince, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Craig Prince. I organize and promote all the downtown blood drives. Our office is in Green Tree. It's Vitalent now, but we're still Pittsburgh's Blood Bank. We were formerly Central Blood Bank. We provide all the lifesaving transfusions for all of our local patients in AGH, UPMC, and other regional hospitals. Our executive director and Mayor Ganey discussed the blood shortage and how we can work together to raise awareness, help with blood collections, and a friendly competition among districts. They've requested I organize a Pittsburgh City Council Blood Drive Challenge where each district hosts a blood drive in August during our time of need and when council has a break. The winner will have bragging rights for the year plus win something donated by each district. In Pittsburgh, we collect between 20% to 30% of our blood supply from students, so while they are on break and people are away from their offices for vacation, we see a huge decrease in blood donations. Vitalent collected about 13,000 fewer blood donations in April and May of 2022 than the same months last year. In Pittsburgh and nationwide, blood donation has decreased over 50% in the past 10 years. 37% of the population is eligible to donate the gift of life, but less than 10% actually donate. The Pittsburgh City Council Blood Drive Challenge is a fantastic way to reach out to new donors and see our regular donors. Unfortunately, we never collect enough blood donations to keep up with our hospital's demands, so we need to import blood from other parts of the country. As you probably saw, nationwide, blood donations have been declining, and blood collections are at dangerously low levels. The inventory for type O blood is less than half of the desired four-day supply. If the shortage continues, non-emergency surgeries like knee replacements will need to be put on hold until we have a safe inventory of blood. Each blood donation will directly impact or save three local lives because we'll take those donations back to our lab in Green Tree. We'll separate the red cells, plasma, and platelets. We always hear about the surgery and trauma patients going through red cells. Plasma is the watery part of the blood that helps the blood pressure, so our organ transplants and burn patients receive those, as well as a host of other patients. When cancer patients go through chemo treatments, many of them will need platelet transfusions because the platelet-producing bone marrow cells are damaged by chemo and radiation therapy, or when they are crowded out of the bone marrow by cancer cells. We supply everything needed, including staff, equipment, drinks. Unique group code donors we use to make their lifesaving appointment on our website, digital and printed marketing pieces, plus we cover all liability with our certificate of insurance that can be customized at the location request. We need help with, all we need help with is finding a location and getting the word out to your constituents for them to make and keep their lifesaving appointment, plus provide something from your district that is the same as for, for our annual Blood Drive Challenge. We have set up blood drives in banquet halls, hotels, houses of worship, union halls, community rooms, gyms, and a wide variety of other spaces. We probably have had a blood drive in the location you pick, but if not, I'll need to come and do a quick room site inspection to make sure the space will work. Other than saving three lives, the benefits of donating for the donor are they will receive a wellness check before they donate. And I just wanted to say thank you for the quick response to Council President Smith for the Banksville Park Shelter Blood Drive, Councilman Wilson at the Union Place Gym, Councilman Coghill at the Moore Park Gym, and Councilperson Strasburger at the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
I ask the other five members to please work with your staff this week so we can get these blood drives on the schedule. UPMC and AHN-
Thank you. Your time is expired. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I will just say, I'll encourage members who have not reached out yet to please make sure you do. Thank you. And can we have our next speaker, registered speaker, who is Naomi Mullen? Naomi Mullen?
Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning, Naomi.
Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Do no harm is not just a rule that whose background might. Government shall not harm the people or be held accountable. Blockbusting and affliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. This is not advisable. Yesterday, the detrimental Bon Air school building worsened to being disruptive and a nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to youths who broke in on top of trespassing. Three of the seven had to be escorted out of the building. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been blighted with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proven futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people, a beautiful calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. Will the rest of City Council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood? We, the property owners, say no to anything other than a green space to replace the school. Reapportionment is thoroughly rejected by we, the people of Bon Air. There is no benefit to us, only harm. The answer is no. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Alex Dorson. Is Alex online? No, Alex is not online. Amy Theresa Compratore? Oh, wait. Is it Alex Dorson?
Hello, Council, thank you. My name is Amy Therese Compratore. My preferred name is Aim. I am in Northside, 15212, District 1. May it please the Council, I ask that my statement be submitted as part of the public record in their entirety. On June 15th, I almost lost my life due to the power outage that affected many Pittsburghers, including those of us at Presley. My seizures from my epilepsy could not take it. I also have lupus SLE, Sjogren's Syndrome, and chronic kidney disease stage 3B. Presley Street High Rise, I would have died had I not had the resources and the intellect to get out of the building when I did. I called DPL, but couldn't get very far because HACP has so many phone numbers, and no one knows which is attached to our account. We had a major public health emergency, and no one cared. I had to call 911 for the building. Overheated disabled residents, most elderly, some younger, in addition to the power outage. Tried taking a shower in the dark to cool down. I placed a welfare check to make sure my fellow residents were not dead. Even Philadelphia checks up on their seniors and disabled in the summer. In my six years living at Presley, we've had massive turnover in management. It was bad enough before COVID, but the pandemic has made this an intolerable place to put some of our city's most vulnerable residents. We've been without manager for over three months and have not been informed by mail or otherwise, or email. Over two months ago, now three going, our manager left us without notice, no mail by HACP, our manager, or our real estate asset manager. I found out by our security guard. Our real estate asset manager is no longer answering his phone, by the way, and his voicemail is full. Our manager doesn't have the courage to give us a phone call or telling us whether she left. I found out this morning that there were selective people that knew, but others and the entire building did not. However, a job is where you show up to work, whether in person or virtually. There is no virtual communication, no phone communication, email communication. The only communication we get is about our bill, you know, being due for rent. We get that twice in our emails, that's it. Human defecate in front of our building, as well as behind our building and on our property. We had our manager for years, then we started to share with Bidwell, now we, now Bidwell has a manager and we don't. We deserve to know why. We deserve better. I am the only one to not gotten, I am not the only one to have gotten beaten up in our elevators in years past, and still have, we still have no cameras in the elevators. People urinate in the elevators. We get graffiti in the elevators, months at a time. People stuck on those elevators for hours at a time. Our weather is shut off every month for them to work on, and I hope to talk to you, Councilmen, after the meeting. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Elena Zetsoff.
My name is Elena Zetsoff. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. Once again, I'm here to speak on the Walnut Capital rezoning through Bill 2021-1906. The Planning Commission's last recommendation on this was that City Council gives further review and consideration to the height buffers and the height recommendations adjacent to existing residential districts. This is because the touted height reduction zone in the proposed bill is not the same as the residential compatibility protection we currently have. Using the phrase "residential compatibility" in a generic manner when speaking of Bill 1906 is misleading. The differences lie in how close buildings can be to houses, and also the allowance of 60 extra feet in height. The Planning Commission understood that buildings will be too high and too close to residences. Why should our residential areas be subject to that? Why should the residents of Oakland not have the same residential compatibility protections as other neighborhoods? It is ironic that the amendment to this bill is for the 400-foot length to be increased to 425 feet, because when the Planning Commission saw it again in the Oakland Plan, they recommended it be decreased from 400 feet. Regarding the point system, why is a point being given for lead certification, which is required? This essentially raises the base height 15 feet and makes it easier to get to maximum height. The reason given by city planning was to incentivize. Developers should not be incentivized to meet requirements, and doing so is absurd and points to the pro-developer attitude of city planners. Points for a grocery store? We don't need it at the price of a higher building. At the virtual town hall meeting held last week, there was not one positive comment, even when twice prompted to do so. That is a comment in and of itself, and almost all comments were on content. You are elected to represent the people, not the developers. Isn't a year of pushback from residents enough? Development, a grocery, more apartments, mixed use, et cetera, can happen without a zoning change. I am not against change. In this case, it's a matter of scale, and buildings allowed under 1906 are not in scale with the surrounding houses. Illustrating this, I invite you to watch the video of our 3D model on oakcliff.org. Oakland should not become the next downtown or bakery square because Oakland already has established neighborhoods with long and short-term residents. This proposed zoning tears at the fabric of these neighborhoods, the very neighborhoods that Pittsburgh officials brag about. Please send 2021-1906 back to the drawing table. Passing it saying it can be amended later puts the burden on residents and gives the developers whose bulldozers are waiting the opportunity to raise entire costs. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Les Ludwig, and I've had the pleasure of visiting with you for probably 30 years. During that period, I've had the honor of making a friendship with a former captain of the police force, Dan Quinlan, who unfortunately couldn't be here this morning to offer his thanks to the chief on his retirement. But that brings back memories. And why bother taking the time to come and speak with you? We've had an increase, we have an increase. We've had a decrease in the amount of violence, especially in the South Side. And what we really need is a change of thinking. If we keep doing the same thing over and over again, the tendency is that we get the same result. In the meantime, the statistics speak for themselves that they're, that the amount of violence in that area of the city is out of hand. So what can we really do about it? Well, policing two men in a car just isn't doing the job. It's not that the men aren't doing the job, it's the fact that by the time the car stops- It's not that the men aren't doing the job, it's the fact that by the time the car stops and, and one of the officers gets out, the bad guy is two blocks away running like a bat out of hell because he's afraid of being caught, he doesn't want to go to jail. So how do we stop that? Well, I've asked Dan, said, "What's faster, man or a dog?" Well, it's a dog. And the dog, the canine division, literally, the few people that I've had the opportunity to speak to have actually jumped up out of their chair at the thought that we would end up with more dogs bottling up the bad guys and then the officer coming up and putting the cuffs on them. And those dogs smell the dope, they smell the smoke from the firing of the weapon, and therefore represent a means to an end. So I bring the subject back to you again for a second or third straight presentation that we have to look at the history and see where we've come and see how we can get to the best place that we want to be. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Have a good day. And is there any further speakers wishing to address City Council?
May I? I have to exit.
Our next speaker, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Katy, where it was tires, 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill District. First, I wanted to say, last week after I spoke, it didn't seem like anybody was going to speak, and then I had brought Robin, and she had left, and I went out. I came back in to get my purse and stuff, and I realized there was a woman speaking, but I, I usually, now I fuss about you coming, people coming and getting proclamations, and they get their praise, and then they leave. They never listen to what we, the people, say. So I felt kind of bad. I want to let you know, I left because I didn't know nobody else was speaking, because I stayed to the very end. Plus, I wanted to say, number two, for Jim Furlough, they were talking about him being dedicated and so on, and I give praise to that man because I had been coming to City Council, Val McDonald, president, and sometimes start the meeting with just one or two councilmen people, and I'm saying, wait a minute, if there's nine, there's supposed to be at least five. I kept asking for, for the books to read, and Wes Wassler kept saying she didn't have them. Now, one time, Furlough was mad, he said, "Oh, come on now, if the citizen wants these books, you should make sure that it's there." And that one time, they were. He even showed me the little box that they had to put it in. We were talking, and I was saying something about, well, Mr. Furlough, because I was in college then, I don't have a degree, and he looked at me, he says, "And I don't either." And I looked at him and said, "But you're a white man." And he had to agree that, too, because sometimes you just get privileges that we don't because you are a white man. And I really am really upset about the Schober leaving, your, your captain, I mean, chief that's leaving, because I really tell you, now, you hear me come down and talk about the police, but I do believe this man was dedicated, and he also believed in being fair. When I heard him talking to my homeless friend that I had brought up here to talk, and he was, he was sitting and he was listening, and I told him last week when I saw him that I will speak up for you and for me to say that you were okay, people have to listen because I tell you when you're wrong, and if you're right, wrong don't do nobody. Also, I wanted to say this, that up in my district, up in the building where I live at, you remember the woman came and she was saying, Robin saying that she had a stroke, and there's a woman that is, that challenged her. Well, when I came to my building, I found out this same woman is screaming and hollering that Mrs. Brown better keep, better watch what she say. She needs to keep her mouth shut, she's talking too much. Well, I got my daughter, Therese, is here, is taking care of me, my home aide. Well, she had went to the manager, manager said, "I can't do nothing, I can't do nothing." She said, "Oh, yes, you can." She told her.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Evangelist Floe Williams, and I live at 715 Mercer Street in the high-rise. I've been here before speaking about the security. Now, they don't have any janitors, there's mold on the rugs, it's very dangerous. I just want someone to hear and have some type of mercy on the people that's living without a janitor in the building, mold on the floors, afraid to come out their buildings because there's no security, people letting people that's barred from the building into the building to terrorize the elderly people, and we need some type of help. I'm just praying that someone hears this and have some type of compassion on us elderly people and help us to do something. Someone knows there's, the management does not, she condemns it because she talks to the girl that's not even allowed in the building. She dresses up as a man and come in and rob us seniors. She is taking people's money, they say you can't do anything until we catch her in the building, and by the time the police get there, she's gone. Now, the security is there, they can hold her until the police come. Help us, please. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any further comments before City Council? Anyone else wishing to address City Council? Anyone else wishing to address City Council in the audience? Any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 470, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operations of its senior community centers. Said agreement shall be for a term of one year at no cost to the city, with compensation to the city not to exceed $783,450.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 471, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 CDBG Program: The 2022 Through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Harrian Avenue Bridge by $391,000." Bill Number 472, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Active Allegheny Grant Program for Planning Around the McClure Avenue and Woods Run Avenue Connection in the Amount of $50,000. Bill Number 473, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the Work on the Citywide Intelligence Transportation System Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $299,561. Bill Number 474, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Harrian Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $391,000. This Resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement and no cost to the city. Further Resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 475, Resolution Granting Unto the University of Pittsburgh Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Three New Shuttle Shelters to Be Located in Front of Hillman Library at 221 Shenley Drive in the Fourth Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 476, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unopened Portion of Bryant Street Laid Out in the Morningside Manor Plan of Lots as Recorded in the 11th Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 477, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and/or the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Community Partner Playground Contract with Kaboom to Collaborate in the Construction of a New Playground at West Penn Park in Polish Hill. Bill Number 478, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program for the Arsenal Park Phase 1 Construction Project. The Grant Proposal Includes a Request of $250,000 with a Local Match of $139,115 for a Total Project Cost of $389,115.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 479, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sales, Item A and B, 507 West Jefferson and 1740 Eckert. Bill Number 480, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Side Yard Programs, Items A through T, 615 Del Viers, Zero Lombard, 4902 Rosetta, 5447 Rosetta, 5445 Hillcrest, 1116 North Mertland, 7110 Race, 7432 Race, 714 Naylor, 502 Winterburn, 5008 Glenwood, 22 Exeter, 1111 Constanton, Hallock, 533 Griffin, 1232 Sunday, 1318 Warner, 2802 Perrisville, 910 Reese, 426 Juconda.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 481, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into a Lease Agreement with the Community College of Allegheny County for the property located at 90918 North Lincoln Avenue. The lease agreement shall be at a cost not to exceed $2,147,886.24. Bill Number 482, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Jack Lafferty Truck Parts, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,439.25 for Upfitting of a Vehicle for the Auto Squad. Bill Number 483, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into a Data Sharing Agreement with the Bloomberg School of Public Health housed in the John Hopkins University to Engage in a Process and Outcome Evaluation of the Office of Community Health and Safety Pre-Hospital Brew-Prenophine Program, which Agreement Shall Be at No Cost to the City.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to waive the rules for Bill 0481, so it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Senate Committee Agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Strasburg, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 484, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 729, Authorizing an Agreement or Contracts with Bloomberg and Associates LLC for Effective Communication Services by Authorizing Funding for Additional Services Within the Scope of the Contract at a Cost Not to Exceed $178,916.
And I have a, myself, Chair of Hearings. I have two things on my agenda. Did you see?
Yeah. That's our office.
Okay. Okay. It's okay.
Yep. Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 485, Resolution Further Amending and Supplement in Resolution 539 as amended, entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor, the City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Contract or Agreement with Granite is Inc. for Software Upgrades, Service Hosting Services, and Annual Maintenance of Ledger Star Agenda Management and Video Streaming," in order to extend the contract in additional 12 months for an additional cost of $60,935.03. Bill Number 486, Resolution Appointing Arthur Bathrop to Serve as a Member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission for a Term to Expire May 31, 2024.
Thank you. And for the appointment, would anyone want to interview or? No? Okay. So, Madam Kirk, what's the motion for that? Okay, then can we waive the rules of council to approve? Is that we have? No. So you want me to make the motion to waive the rules, council, for the appointment? Okay, can you make that motion?
Sorry, I need to be. Uh, motion to waive the rules on Bill 845.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tomorrow's Senate Committee Agenda. And for the appointment, Madam Kirk? Motion to approve? Okay. So if nobody wants to interview, can we have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The appointment is approved. Thank you. And now we move on to our unfinished business, which is, is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action, and we have Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 466, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for June 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 407, Resolution Authorizing the City to Accept a Payment of $30,000 from Prime Gov Solutions as Amical Resolution of a Contract Dispute. Bill Number 429, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Center for Hearing and Deaf Services, Inc., and Global Wordsmith for the Purposes of Providing Language Accessibility and Communication Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $60,000. Bill Number 430, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Pay Membership Dues to the University of Pittsburgh's Connect Program for Three Years at a Cost Not to Exceed $15,000 Annually. Bill Number 432, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 166 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Donate Personal Property Value at $92,639 to Computer Reach. Bill Number 442, Resolution Requesting and Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Management and Budget, and Directors of the Department of Finance and Public Works to Explore Entering Into an Agreement with the Center for Employment Opportunities to Establish a Program Providing Employment Opportunities for Individuals Recently Returned Home from Incarceration.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to mention that the Computer Reach Bill, I'm happy to see move forward, that was something I actually asked the previous administration if we could do, refurbish, send our, donate our computers, our used computers so that they'll be distributed throughout the communities. I'm happy to see that, that moving forward. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, their passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Miss Gross.
Gross, no. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 467, Report to the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 453, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 358, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement with the Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc., for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment, and related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety by extending the term for one additional year. Bill Number 454, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Pennsylvania Resources Council for Waste Management Services in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $7,500. Bill Number 455, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Zambali's Fireworks Manufacturing Company for the display of a fireworks show in conjunction with, in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $67,375.
You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, their passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Miss Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 468, Report to the Committee on Public Works for June 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 427, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements or use of existing agreements between the city and Juliandra Jones, Najah Moon, Cameron Nesbek, and Mikael Owana for the creation and installation of a public art at Homewood Park at a cost not to exceed $120,000.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, their passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Miss Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilmember Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 469, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 15, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 291, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application under the Pittsburgh Code, Title IX, Zone in Article Four, Chapter 910, Section 91001 D1, to Meyer, Ankovich, and Scott on behalf of 306th Avenue Property LLC for the transfer of development rights involving 33 dwelling units from 130 to 165th Avenue Zone GTA Golden Triangle Sub District Eight and five dwelling units from 417 Wood Street Zone GTA Golden Triangle Sub District Eight to 306th Avenue Zone GTA Golden Triangle Sub District Eight, 1st Ward, Council District Six. Bill Number 433, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with McKay Lounge Conservation Laboratory for Conservation and Preparation Services for the Virgil Cantini mural located project for an amount not to exceed $351,093.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, their passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Miss Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a meeting announcements, a few meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 22, at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our standing committee's meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting's webpage by the deadline. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, I just want to say a final thank you again to... The reception. I want to say a final thank you to our Chief of Police for keeping the City of Pittsburgh safe for so many, so many years. And with that said, if anyone would like to join us for a reception in the back of City Council's side of the hall, please join us immediately following this meeting. I have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
No move.
No move.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Lauren. Be safe.[1713.51]